Sils el mergid roguy, vice president Senetor Ludim, Floridair Senetor Mariur, Marbecel Senetor. Bokwa asmner tialnia momo ngeru sils ere al sixtin special session er gidra, omutru il olbir aglulau mora order. Clear gam waru.
Senetor Chis Aita ya.
Oi.
Senetor Kamsek Elias Chin.
Oi.
Senetor Gubagik Bo Inabo.
Oi.
Senetor Stevenson Che Kwartey.
Oi.
Senetor Frank Kiota.
Aytiang.
Senetor Eric M. Nakamura.
Oi.
Senetor Philip Paul Leclay.
Oi.
Senetor Che Udu Sabao Senyor.
Oi.
Senetor Chan Bis Kobong.
Oi.
Senetor Mason Yere Abangan Wip.
Oi.
Floridair Gray Mariur.
Oi.
Vice President Marco Eblauro Ludim.
Oi.
President Hojont Paulis.
Oi.
Mister President Ayak Korum.
Ayak Korum bol shbedal gukmo mesa bebir aureledu, mta gatmoq maqmu nttira Senetor Mariur Floridair er gid, mbo la motigai er gid aureledu, Senetor Mariur.
Vice President Malungil itasil silmergau Marbecel Senetor, se bodan morm mta gora item for a calendar er gid, maqmu adaptra 24 day journal era 15 regular session.
Si damo shion nam dung esegana, tirgeer rogu il goongae mta adaptra 24 day journal era 15 regular session er du oi? Om tok, nam gaay, Floridair.
Vice President, mta gora item five, mta item five, msetsumra Presidentelme, dirigal mora item six, era reportamla Departmentelme, dirigal diaq. Uh, dirigal communication nara Selbital Blayelme, nara House of Delegateselme, dirigal diaq. Diaqanara item eight, transcending committee reports, dirigal diaqanara item nine, era special committee reports. Mta order of the day, era item 10, diaqanarini mta item 11, era bill calendar, diaqanara first, ma second reading, anarini mta thud reading, ma mmo mta gatpasera Senate Bill 10-181 ST1, era ugideu lupong lomion.
Clear gam miwata ito.
Senate Bill number 10-181 ST1. Bill for na to amend the fiscal year 2020 national budget to provide the National Scholarship Board with funding flexibility, to amend section four of the cross act to reduce appropriation to the Ministry of Finance to fund benefits, programs, and services made available pursuant to section three of that act, to enact a continuing budget authority for all regular budget activities of the national government, including supplemental social security benefit payments, appropriations to the Republic of Palau Civil Service Pension Plan and PPUC water and waste water subsidy. Tiel ludos mmo ladi mmo lada FY 2020 national budget, moruli ma sel National Scholarship Board da morinia flexibiti ra budget retir, dirigal mmo lada section four cross act, el momo yantix sel ludodol esperiniya Ministry of Finance er girela il benefit ma program ma service, er girel sel section three she gidela. Dirigal mo utmakliya tinevi budget authority girela raga 2021, mo includea il ludodol ma social security benefit payment ma sel appropriation mora Palau Civil Service Pension Plan ma PPUC water and waste water subsidy. Tiel gos mmo lapititoshia taqal ito rabil belau, tamii item msa wakchunyor.
She gidra ito rra. Al girel tial ludos el molla, ngania girela yosa angar gidra ela al merak, bom sattelela chairman mgo mirogu yunga member salagamitim, al ngaria somi mokmung e bom dung rau era bodos senkyo. Chairman.
Oi, mmasaw le, Mister Presidente. Mister President, ondas la aman mlemi la discussion er eli. Ma to briefly summarize, tiang aman dimo ayesha sia aavre la Senate, amo reduce ra sum ministry levels ra 15%, ma bebir ra 5%. Lidi omes regil sel engsangse la revenue ra nacional, mang ondas shkado vatalto, mo doloq regin mora House, and we hope for the best ra akutetela international economy ma national economy. Sula, Mister President.
Sula Chairman, Marian Wod, Senetor Kiota.
President Malungil itasil silmergau, ma la vice president tirgeer taqal Senetor Marco Ludim, ma Floridair er gid taqal Senetor Gray Mariur Marbecel Senetors. President takti sawal mutmo ritraita gil bebir atoqtilu eli, girela il conditions for compliance, girel tial loana dal bangari. Uh, gatakliya, Mister President, rosa say aigai gidil teletayera conditions for compliance. Aigel bekal loanu bladu la imama del mea, adimla kaway tia gidba adashis bebrini blabal aigai gidale loansel lobangela palasi decisions er gid. Ling, akumra, Mister President, rosa il tial balwaq, gabalment tirgidma tror al dalea bluladra aigai gidil banking institutions, uh, apart rengia direk tosi ga al du ulel, eng moso be'edel gutmoq la gil ngar alid, subakliya balwaq, ma lutel morinia akora akarriyor lumada ra wait al covid 19 dal bangari. Aigai gidil togoil lolgo conditions se blal odarsa ADB me mergid. Awnil mo utbakli sel mo gabalment toliak raqlugu gulmo. Akdirek lo mara, Mister President, rosa say tirgal tomes ra gabalment tirgid, tmbadangalia klisiela akaru er gid, tmbadengei gil degatmoq lurior, loa aigai gidil palasi er gid, eng moso be'lidengosugidra credit rating er gid ma opportunities er gid, access aigai gidil financial assistance. Having said that, Mister President, aigai gidil tial blal beskidil ra grace period ralo, ma direk ligel lo ra taewa blal suspend for two years. Omdas ongari ampel time, Mister President, el bozadaq, aigai gidil lurior, tokoni el al mutial blalmele gabalment, egutmoq mmo moso be'edel mos misiya aigai gidil tial raga medal time lmo. El al sele aigil mitigidro bugela atnaqal el Buursadan ya Minister of Finance er gid. Bil saodar she gidil corporate registry ma tax reform. Uh, for us to, eh saya selongeru 20 million, and I stand corrected. Aldiro er gidro wasa, sel introduce awa aigai gid, and shbedal access ser gid 20, but the last 20 million would depend ra sel bladu pas aigai gidil. Sawal ma attention er gid, Mister President, mmo sel RPL 6-11, sel budget reform after 2001, codified as 40 PNC Chapter 3, era title 4. Sayi awulela aigidulurio, Mister President. Ma awudede er diga, om agaidro sirs pa be'sel ludod, toyaq aigidil tial ralo, omdas surie, Mister President, prudent teletayel er gidama amoso is bebrini, osiyult time, gatugutmoq la gil ngara'al, er gidil gutmoq lmusel blal temedel mengada aigal loan er gid, egadakaltmoq lmo menga. Enga direk, Mister President, malo mara, ngania kan finance raga tirgel mremi gabalment, tirgel morur taringi ma mmo warari. Wasa, eng mal moso be'ir, el momesa aigai gidil teletayel, sel time, aigida amla momesa amral siasing ra akarregar regil belau, ma wudele belau. El al time, Mister President, a minister gidra finance, angarinya alda'ad allo lobentri tirga murtu modaito lur belau. Lo ayesha tir aigidulurior, ma aigidil keigaga raqmo, mmo magaranga alsis wa be'sel gabalment, ebol albangla aigidil etogoil. Ma omdas, bayo maral wasa, aigal lorula administration tokuniya minister, minister el Buursadan. Ngyamutmoq la aigidil tial, el momi moq lmusel sirs wa be'sel gabalment, shbe'iril elmo omurra aurelir, el diaqadiri gbo lo egutmoq la aigidil bakse blal beskid, omdas, bayo biotra sel be'sel gabalment, Mister President. Ma klibut, Mister President, mo ritraita positiona al girel she gidil option one, raga page 15, tia gidil, page 14, tia gidil reporta atnaqal Senetor Ludim, elmo tibo ol tirak tia gidil gatiu budget authority, lobangela aigidil amendments, elmo specifyar sel supplemental el mora social security benefit payments. She gidil, Mister President, yaqmal brangasurime tial tial mos regal, muyval she seru desio, lwa da senkyo. Sula.
Senetor Leclay.
Oi, Presidenta. Tibok tu sese malungil itasil silmergau Marbecel Senetors. Uh, di kadangara palasi level elang, omdas, mla modia kalse del mal saudan numbers, er tial budget, ring maturity tial blay amla decide, elmo katert tial budget, esen deringil mursel bital blay era House of Delegates. Tii milgatmoq la gegril wisur chana, President, er girela aigai gidil betogel ma gegril bulu rablulad. Ngkloa atogoil wasa ma advice, ma igal gegril bulu wasa, giril reduce a government tergmiil, mo fit in the number of population. Uh, di selbo odakampeni mma mukklu buluing, shbe'ela mukklu bulu dongoklek mulwa isering. Ndakal ngaria, President, mukklu lurir, mbotoga natural resources retir, toga know-how retir, toga adrir shbe'il lospe retir. Sel dungul mira bulu belawe, ndakadil bulu belau ma, toko bulu rabluladra wa Malta, ma FSM, toko bulu ra South Pacific, wa Cook Island. Diregal straveler tia gidil kataon raga government, wa bo'do fit in, she gidil ratio linya mukklu bulu, ma VAB, ma Siaval, advice gidro wasa, giril mo ma gegraya government er gid. A government er gid, President, through my studies, government er gid, olngaseer gid, ader belau. Akote, sel degotel most er gid, sel dato of the school, akote, bo'do relayer ngyi, a government er gid. Kadame, mawreleda government, uh, omas aklagake ngargidil mor point, most edel guk move on, lopena aigai gidil private enterprise er gid. Mbotoga er gid, nga maqplawa isaysa akutel mina school, akmul il moru raga government, el mora point, egukrat swaiter say move on, el mora private. Ma toga er gid, ngartiang, al dakal masanga, kladiri, mla motru osiyul time. Ma point, ngakal giril she gidil, President, wasa, memelaga dolugu, sel opportunity tirgel ngargidre al time, lguk giril me ngartiangarin laktaona uul, temelago vidam, dospe a sese ngari ludod, el mistri aigidil opportunity, msel ngareure. Cross act er gidama marigara January, funding regi, WIoe amo marigara December. Mngel giril mo next President, a giril lo ba aktoongel tial budget, elmo shbe'el lospe, she gidil reprogram authority rni, aigai gidil guk partra population linya ospe angesu. A advice gidro wasa, tirga gid ospe angesu, group, mngel dalul osutire. Aigai gidil, President, wumesel rangalil tia gidil malugu rtal budget. Ediregal at the same time, aigida ngara amta'ar busul period, kadangara time raga covid, el diaqadil bulu belau ma bulu rablulada affectedel giril. Bekal bulu rablulada, osi krollele eh, wa el al time, melon ngaseer adrir. Mngiradal ngua klo ngesu, el ngumsa nextel President, mmo ngua kingellele, mo berrogel osengel, el giril ar ader belau. Sel dadu bulu belau, et ader ngar aksera bulu belau. Menga osengel, President, wasa, unfortunately, gada mo katert tial budget, elmo esen deringil mursel bitang, edimla kama malungil studies er gid, President, a state government, ma bureaus, ma ministries, ma agencies, el all of a sudden, they get shocked and surprised, el giril tia gidil cutting of budget. Ne giril sugum sawal meru raway tia gidil, mal outreachers movera Senate, ne giril askertil me lo wasa, al suguma gimo gata 15% tergmiil, ngaramo hapen rta gidil agency. Di reporta yesa akutel ngia Vice President Senetor Ludim, rilya malungil, reporting ding, ngmal klo gomantir report, ding wal veltegra direction linya akumran, ndakal lungil direction ablu belau, era al time. Mga demo, olava betogel lo mosi siul mira, al sirtial bulau, im saw, di at the end of the day, egadamal ngara maringil time. Giril, msa telel tial government, mo berrogel osengel giril ader belau. Akmbadengek mul wasa, asume gada, ngaltenat mga deme mora nextel government, ndiregal ngaria tial lila supplemental budget, emral togoil shbe'el. Mngse edel motrus she gid, asuma President, ngaria identify fund blal si, aigida amo otma egwongeri ngilo bengelen. Di sugum ndiaq, mngukpo laqal shbe'el she gid, engmo maringera President raga bulu belau, elmo ngaseer ader belau. Ma timo ngua auldasro wasa, gada mal ngara tituogal time, ahel der gid aadre belau, akote, tituogal, ma klangar gid mga gada ngara tituogal time, emlamo ayesha layteda imol gegril bulu belau, al diaqal shbe'el toogal. Mngiril motma roguy, e osigisel gatulungil klungiaol gid, aospe ngil mol ngaseer gid, ader belau. Ren ndakal biotl toga dangari. Kada kramdara al sela imol gegril dial, etma roguy, mngiril motma aigai ngaseu. Ndakadu wasa dometta lau gul, malalau orar bebir arat. Aigidu ba lau gul ngara abebula bridge raga dial, elagdo elagdolu gidi. Mndakal lungil sel dido metta lau gul malairar bebir arat, aigida tial government er gid, aigidu dongo korteang, al diaal bletalau gul toogal. Mga ngbatoga lungil luldasro na to, edirege, President, aktrigal di sawal mo wa is wasa. Uh, aigel luldasro blal oto gada aradashoi tial katert tial budget, tadiregal mal ngaria meritering. Menga diaq baknitadi nga aktrigal mal lungil orengsa, agamentirtikma say oi, ngarinya meritering, ngaria ma klo bulgul. Diregal shbe'el, omongaral togoi, tia palasi decision, kada mo otma roguy, otang lokiwangi. Et tial budget, la ngamo mengarel al dur reading, akmbadikek ma she betoga er gidamo. Di unfortunately, mmo diaq shegal senkyo lobentri. Di mmo diaq senkyo lobangela maturity tial blay. Di nga kamo malmi President lowriol lobangela maturity tial blay, mo make sure, ndakal matamala atangmatal ader belau. Lokiw tia gidil budget rbladakatir. Akurengsana wasa House of Delegates, adiregal mal disappointed er giril tialkat, ma obisra President, trura agamentra Minister Sadangre al tutau, adiregal disappointed er giril tialkat, mngual two against one. Msel dangar al sirtial blay, nga minority, di sel dato gada al sirtial blay mora arangalil tial government rogi, inshebe'el ma she aknara majority. Oh, she gidya, oh, musawla Senetor Yere Abangan Mal, swal wara di reminder. Mga lungil toga dangari, Senetor Inabo, ndakal maknit. Aigal luldasro, gidro guya, mal blol mulgora ngalga wasa. There's one stars in the sky, gidro guil ader bela sawal moringir klungiaol. The how to get there is is the problem, a depender gid. Ma bebir at time, gada mo omlisipekker geri, ndi gatuxigi she gidil star, ma bebir at time, gada di melmal tmlingi mmore. Di aktib, esel wa is wasa, uh, fortunately, I feel comfortable ring, tapto gada dungu raga government rogi raga bulu belau, aknara majority, she gidil ngia omdasur gid tial budget. Ma akti lungul more she gid, President, mal maringasurime, pekel senetors, el noshbe'il justify tial budget, tial ngar she gid guklomdasurini, ngaga mba'dikek ma she nguktarara el. Akti lungul more she gid, maringasurime, President.
Sula, Senetor Leclay, Senetor Inabo.
Mister President. Akora bayo mldasro wasa, ablu belau, a giril lungila rungul wasa, gada mo o katta expenditure gabalment. Uh, Mister President, le tirgil ader belal paya tax a majority raga bulu belau. Uh, tirgidil ader belau, paya tax elma gabalment. Adiregal mal lumdasro wasa, gabalmenta klo el taxer gid a diaq, ndakal salgargi kler ni, kada goradi imterka kler ni. Ma Mister President, ndakal sawal al katra budget e maringal decisiona wasa, gada mo katra budget, ndakal biot? Di, Mister President, ndakal al du ulel al la udod. Ling, alba'awa ipengeme, emdulose mbona mongoy taringiye, elaha nganal shbe'mal oytiye, aigidawa ya da kada refusal face raga a reality. Mang, bulu la ader rogiil, alda'awdodongiye, Mister President. Aktirgal mal umrang wasa, gil negative governance ngartil loan agreement. Amal clear wasa, maringal er gid al bulu belau, amo kanplay raga conditions. Akotel conditiona wasa, aigiril mo o change sa expenditure targets er gid, ma aigel omigitel audod raga gabalment, aigiril mo change. Tul tergoqal mokmur gid la semkatra expenditure gabalment, bom sipil pera loaner gami. A number two, wasa, aigiril gil capital expenditures gami a giril rulia a national infrastructure investment plan, e ol tirak kler ni. Ongede, wasa, aigiril mornia external debt strategy er gid. Aigida amdegil ngarsil ADB report akmulasa sel external debt, sel balsedal mora outside raga bulu belau, adagiril mopas raga 50% rajidipir gid. Di gid a already gid, mlapas raga say. Ntite gidil 75 millional bladungu elang, ma aigel bebiradet, aigidu, namo eksid raga 200,000. Aigiril change raga attack system er gid. Aigiril change, aigirogul state owned enterprise, ma social security system er gid, aigidil evaluate rniya change. Mang, aigaroguil measures ldlu wasa lungir er gid. Ngamral lungir er gid, Mister President. Di gal mral lungil, gada mlar muu raga al lastel eight years. Ngaram lungir er gid, riga daru lmer elang. El at the force er gid, el momruul, mmo mba'diha atchois er gid, e ngara al sela covid 19, mandiaq a revenue er gid. Mga dada, mga dada, tamale atter gid, el mangal mba'diha atchois er gid. Aigiril di meruul aigel sawala ADB, lela ndakal beskid a udod. Mang, sel ilgotel 20 millional dungu, al suguma gada introduce aigalla al mer olbir aglulau. Ya ongeru, aigiril ilsana aigalla al mo molla, emal go implement. Akmal umrang wasa, anexel fiscal year FY 2021, ndakarolela dakamplaya aigidro guil. Al palasi tiramkatatalk muridil wasa, gatmoq la yal palasi. Aigai gidil, trial force er gid, el momruul, etirhatal daru me elang. Mang, ngatidel lumdasro, Mister President, algora mal gonger tial budget, lultuira sel wasa, abelebola aigal 20 millional, orsel 40 million el mergid. Di momde'ala 10 millional mora FY 2022. Mang, weya dostemo, President, elagda katert tial budget rya FY 2021, egadu, egadu modabu la katra FY 2022. Mang, ngora mo taraka, edal ngaringal togoi, asume gada mdegil wasa, ndakal udod elang, emere budget, mang ngarsel gotel ngarva, baltal gael, etadlu wasa, inshebe'iu mongoy tia gal udod. Yauriul, gada mo kat, ele offer tola, legidil timla kada the technical responsibility ruliam maringal lurior. Mister President, mal ndakal sawal meru ra budget cut, nding ndakachois er gid, aigiril rulia budget cut. Ling, ndakadu mdegil wasa, tial loana mal sepedel ngu, mal uben diaq. Ndakadu ngyi. Di akmbadengek wasa, ngsepedel el mobri, yal sumengaria udod, egadu, mutalong wasa ital budget. Mister President, omesertel newspaper raga tia belau, August 31, sel front page ngarinya siasing raga a secretary da defense ramrigel, ma President Mmasaw, ekmul wasa, tial compact review a giril momregra by end of this year, December, September, October, November, December. Four months etel compact review a giril na momrege, Mister President. Ngari tidal Island Times, tiang uingarang.
Karian, marian ngare ikritil Island Times.
Eh, etel Island Times, Mister President. Ngaria adekol el ngarinya, ef mulasa IFSM, tia gid. IFSM angiloa 62 million al compact funding for FSM, for FY 21 budget. Wasa, tial 62 million, 62.9 million fiscal year 2021 compact of free association sector grant assistance. Amorai gage, aling grant assistance, 27.4 million amor education, 23.8 million amoraheld, 8.3 million amor infrastructure, 1.5 million amorah reporting and accountability, 1.3 million amorah public sector compact building, 175,000 amorah private sector development, 278,000 amorah environment, 175,000 amorah private sector development. Mister President, al suguma IFSM asel wa 62 million, ngarama bela, dimla raga 15 million. Ngamal sawal ogil se iud question, ngarama bela, dimla raga 15 million atara. Mang, ay, akmal lumdasro wasa, tial negotiation raga compact, amal giril momdegil wasa, nguaran albulit. La gada acta akmulasa, mal to'udud. La la ududede, la gada betobel wasa, ndakal udud. Aigidu, ndakal udud. Mang, I hope, Mister President, engmo sepemal ngaral leadership meeting and bring up this issue. Al suguma, FSMA sel wa 62 million atara, kidam dirang giril seped, ndakaklaro raga FSMA bela. I think it is not good.
Senator Inavo?
Mr. President, I think the senator Inavo. Mr. President, I think the president. Limit the discussion of the bill. The issue of the affairs. Mr. President, the money is not good. The money is not good. The money is not good. The same breath. The money is not good. The solution is offered. I think the money is not good. Offer the supplemental budget. Mr. President, I think the money is not good. The limit is not good. 15% is not possible. 2008-09, the trajectory of the budget is limited. I think the money is not good. 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 I think the money is not good. The money is not good. The money is not good. After November. I think the president. The money is not good. The money is not good. I think the money is not good. The money is not good. The money is not good. Mr. President, I think the money is not good. The money is not good. Over one year. The issue is not good. The money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. Mr. President.
Point of information, President, is the Russian president. Please accept it. Part of the information.
Senator Inavo?
Senator Inavo, I think the Russian president. I think the Russian president. Mr. President, I repeat. I think the understanding of the government is important. Continuing budget authority. Firstly, we know, the state is the only way for our government to survive is through loans going forward. I think the bill passed by the president is approximately 40 million dollars alone. The financial FY2021. Forty million in loans. The financial FY2021. Approximately 40 million earned through local revenue. I think the money is not good. The money is 10 million for 2022. The money is 10 million for 2022. What does that mean? I think the revenue projection is 2022. The year is around 40 million. Or 40 million. The 10 million is global. As a loan, the government is 2022. We would be looking at around a 50 million dollar budget. I think the money is not good. We would be looking at a 40% to 50% cut on the budget for 2022. I think the scenario is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the question is, are we willing to take a small cut now? The flow into 2022? Or is it 2022? I think the question is not good. Is it 10 years? The government is not good. Do you think it is 15%? Or 40% to 50%? I think the question is not good. Mr. President, I want a bigger cut. I understand that the money is not good. But we have to do something. Of course, we have to borrow. The conditions are low. Of course, the conditions are low. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. Of course, the money is not good. I think the report is not good. The support of the budget is not good. I think we have to make the hard decision today. The problem is not good. The problem is not good. I think the time is not good. If the budget is 40% to 50%? Is it not good? I think the money is not good, Mr. President. I think the reaction is not good. I think the understanding of the government is not good. Over the last eight years, the Senate, our budget for state governments has gone up every single year. I think the government is not good. I think the budget is 600,000 a year. Today, I know their budget. They are talking about 1 million. Why? State block runs have increased every single year for the last eight years. I think the point is not good. I think the understanding of the government is not good. I think the understanding of governors is not good. I think the money is not good. So, we have to take action. We have to make the hard decisions. I think the Russian president.
Senator Inavo?
Mr. President, morning. Mr. President, I think the the legislative findings are not good. The rules are not good. The lines are not good. I think the revenue is expected. The revenue is expected. The report is projected for FY21, 40 million to 59. I think the government is not good. I think the revenue is not good. I think the money is not good. Necessary, reduce the expenditure level. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the chairman, Senator Inavo. I think the money is not good. The money is not good. I think the money is not good. A permanent situation. I think the president is not good. The money is not good. I think the money is not good. The policy is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. The money is not good. I think 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 the COVID-19 pandemic is not good. The money is not good. I think the Minister of Finance has 40 million in the budget. The cross act is 10 million. I think the money is not good. The financial FY2021. I think the money is not good. 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 I think the understanding of the government is not good. My speakers are not good. My other house delegates. My executive branch. I think the money is not good. 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 Twenty-five years after independence. Twenty-five years, I think, is not good. Anyway, I think the issue is not good. I think the news is not good. Mr. President, I think the money is not good. I think the report is not good. I think the Russian president.
Senator Chin?
Mr. President, I think the Russian president. I think the responsibility is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the I think the approving this budget without necessary cuts. I think the Russian president, Senator Senior, is irresponsible. I think the president is not concerned about the number of votes. I think the Russian president. I think the Russian president makes a decision based on facts. Hmm. I think the important critical areas, 5% are better reduced. Ministry of Health. Ministry of Education. Ministry of Justice. ISS, my service remains. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the number of votes is not good. I think the presidential candidates. I think the Russian president is what they want. I think the next administration. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the Russian constitution. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the president is not good. I think the president is not good. I think the vice president, Mark Rudin. I think the president.
Senator Mario?
Mr. President, I think the the budget is not good. The production is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the fourth quarter report for 2019 is not good. I think the total operation of the government is not good. I think the budget 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 is not good. I think the 82 million. I think the money is not good. I think the money is not good. I think the 82 million. I think the 4 million 300,000 is one-time appropriation. I think other activities. I think social security is 2 million 100. I think the other activities is 4 million 300,000. three hundred thousand, mabon madak ngi metal operation, government, eighty-two million se giddi adu lo spe ngira, a twenty nineteen. Magumral waset, tiya dorur ngi, trige ol sel ngara sel lituklela, Senator Inabo, asel ol dorula budget, aset tiya budget, ay gired, rulli balen sel budget. Magundaset tiya gida, adu blor ngil, waset, tiya source blal biscida President, adid reli, tiya moater, tiya source biscida President, el oldimukri se giddil forty million dal, sel loan, el gida, gida tiya dirga masad ringi. Masad waseng ngara ay gil, bodhong atmoq, kondisyon set tiya loan, mo sabi il biscida loan. Agumral wasay ADB trige moqongel, waset, tiya dorur ngi, ilwa blad nguttiya, waset el metel giblo, orgadiil mora ay gil mal, do spe ay gil ngaringil gid appropriate ngi, esay gidi, agummasen trige al sabi el ta ay gil, ma ay gil fiscal policies, sel tiya trige blamind, wasepol sabeda, belaw, mo gutmoqla ay gidi. Metti, agummasen ngi ndakal, sabi edheng gutmakli, ndakal ngaral bol, bol tumelira, ay gil, asala adal mo diya gal lurior, len trige ministere sa do, el me do, ringi trige luku, waseng ngara adori madang ngel million, ay gil, eh, kummas ay gil report, len trige ngara adori eight million, ay gil mo dudhir adal lurior ra government, including ay gil trige ngarawdudra kran. Sel bodhamese, ngua ngara adori six million, asel ngara, tiya general operation government, ay gil rest amora, ay gal, maqmadangli waset, tiang bladagatmakli, ya sabi el a government malmon, ay gidi, omeseng diwa ay gil la madung, waset, tiya, sel dreli, eng giredlan mo gutmoqra, rangelila kruel budget, mo gutmoqra unified budget, em mo sabi edheng mo gutmoqla ay gil roguil, malsum ngarya awdodh, al dabatik, madong atmoq, se giddil unified budget, esab edheng kukme, adjust tringi, mora ay gil uddodh, al gida, namo sabi edheng misel wasay, namo sabi edheng telgib, gil unia budget ra belur belaw, mo ngara. Metti, yanga wal, wara dingoi giddil, wasepol sabed, ndangla kran, October first, tel olmun, maggovernment, dagabon, kusakla, edo omeseng ngi, ay gil maran meluk telan, se giddil, quarera, October, ma December. Hmm, pi, wasesel do, sel do ngara kontinuing, ndakat sabed, mo rulang ngidil budget, ang lesa gadurli tiya, eranglia budget. Mang se giddi ay thukora, omeseng ngi, maqmal trige mo ventri reklad, aset tiya bladagatmakli ya, trige mal, lungil lurior, ulungil, lurior, le blatak, ay gil report tra chairman, mal magatak, la ay gil ngara ul, dagdum nor tiya gidi, edheng trige lotir kli sel tokol, waseng girel, sel dorua budget, dudul ya balen sel budget. Maqmal ventri, trige bakal senator, sel trige mal ongitara, adra asel bitang, sel leader house, wasay membo da, dagel sabed, mergi, osenge, girel, tiya bulur belaw rogir. Edo omesel waset, tiyang mal, wa ngara, apol, affect tringi, ra, tiya, ngasel, abur belaw, ngara affect tringi, ra, tiya belaw rogil, including a state, may gal private sector. Dangli wasepo tokol private sector, amla, minasim, limbi, goseng di giar okyak. Ay gidi, ay government a ultuir ay gidi, sel na, eng giredlan mo, wadukora telgib, lo regda ay gil, ngaringil gid, do spe ay gidi, omesel wasay, ngara ay gil kuk mo sabi el tiya, abesel mem, mo sabi edheng kuk monglo, ay gal omitadra awdodh. Agummasen waseng na, na maldiwa ya, diwa ay gal ipengedra blid, sel do spe, em monge bana kau dudh, dagdum mo mangkekarer ngil, omeseng wasepol sabi el, ngoyga kal mora, ah, next week, mora pay day week, kumpol sabi kal, ngoyga kal mor se gidi. Agummasen tiya dorur ngi, ah, ndakal mangit, ending girel, girel mor ngi, arunguda, adra belaw roguil, wasegad ngara albu roguil, including tiya bulu adaro gil. Eng giredlan telgib, mora regda, ay gil sawaf, eh, mora ay gil, ay gil ngaringil gid, do spe edheng gutmakli tiang. Ay gidi, President, mansula.
Biga. Senator Clay.
Oi, President, eng tiang sel senet budget, tel blal, lotobidi, al dilungil edik, ak tusel sel girel. Oi, se, tiang, lotobidiya Senator Inabo.
Madbora, Mr.
Tiya giddil, ngara.
Eh, erema damora, Mr. Lenius, edo saodh ringi, tiya guk.
President, tiang la mer madadam, related al mortal.
Ndakal part ra discussion.
Malpart ringi President, al dilungil edibuk, discussion, sel tokol gira.
Erima, bol nomregak, damora, Mr. Lenius, bob adreser.
Sel budget tra senet el ngaringil, malkata, makloblugule, President, proposal mo kat na ninety-nine thousand, general staff.
Ali ndakali isu ra discussion, me gulingite, damora.
Kenvolwa isip President.
Dolmum. Varia sal, mo mododu. Alaki haladi, dimo clarifikasyon eh, kabong, eh, Senator, kabong.
Kamangye President, kalasel abom, duklamo lugu, al mo dudu di, ay gal, adra selektor se Mr. President, ma ay gal meeting, agundas, ndakal mal otobangala, eh, akumra, Mr. President, seragul, adal demdasaw ngi, mora reklad. Ni, Mr. President, tiya budget, ul maqmal mo strong reservations, nga kara, approach malmo gorgikla, tiyang adiya kal, eranglila, siya singra, yosa ngara belur belaw. Ngarya sixteen states, ngarya operations are big, eh, ngarya bebil state, malmo mta al, basulid trige kro ngitanges, we pending on three. Ali, ay gal, bol tokol roguil men, me tila government, government, el alta, madakat sabi el help. Mang tiyang adiya kal tokorap politics, mangla, la mo yor ra say, ngara ngar ngi ra giwal, edo bodhong senor, adra adra belu. Eng giredlan mo honest, maladra belu, ekmuhtas, se bom gorgikla, ay gil blal dunga Minister of Finance, blagatakla, ay ga gida, lo ul ngar madad, ndakal, parotra ikan, magudh diyongit, se bohod gorgikla, diyodhongit, a klo understanding, Mr. President, begad rekultuir khol, mangadhodh, arsa'lid, maladh, tiya bulu, malranga saw, eh, eh, bo, lalak, le doregari gid, lor tirakert tiya giddil, first step, lor langat, omeseng se ngara ngari gid, bodholi arablu. Sula, Mr. President.
Sula, eh, Senator Rudim, akti, sohal di clarify, sel F A L, mle, sel forty million loan, ngara alsel, eh, Senator Mario, ndakang?
Oi.
Ngara alsel.
Oi.
Bel al sugum, waigel kukpe bir gida, diya da, diya da, siur, mal, uben diya da umral, waset, sel forty million ami. Engram gado, marura, tiya, el budget, lultura forty million, al sugad ngart tiya umral, wasen, diya al sabi el mutu.
Lalal ma chairman.
Kabot chairman.
Mr. President, sel, sel passa supplemental, egad rek, warri, related, regime, um reg area, el passa supplemental, ni se gida, lotoblangat beni, se gida, after the fact, et muskida babil ngel. Sel forty million, ay gil blal du ra ulal, unconditional, mondrika.
Okay, chairman.
Mang project, eh, ma ul, mang, dagdum morning, reservations rigid, eh, wa, wa gara roguil budget, eh, Mr. President, based on projection, dagdum, kuda project, eh, we accumulate tra cash, as we go along. Di ul, tiyanga ul, waseng al president, triga talgotmoq, lamla, arada, ay gil oyaw ra, asisbalela awdodh. Ela tila, lambo ba, ali, tiyanga namu diya kal balen sel budget, tiyanga lamla omaleng el budget, esel omaleng, you're barring from the future. A forty million san amaklo, eh, sel bor twenty twenty-two, di kilmetra, tel forty-two million a negative. Masel, bladerek, lamdo ra ulal, le, kadi itkura twenty-one, baro a funds, ma, a time, eddiya, mshur, wasen, sel forty-two, ndakang? Se ya girel, lotakal, mora belu.
Ndiak, chairman, adi, adi, gera, waseng ram, ndakang, dagdum, ngar, dagdum umral, wasay, len ngari umral, wasay, sel forty million, adiya kal sabed, al mu, between night, eh, wa, dagdum marura budget, lo, wasel forty million, lultur ngir alsel, dimla marura budget, gul, diya, wasel forty million, mulkli, el mora belu?
Mansula, Mr. President, ra mal lungil gil, len, ngar base ra projection, eh, Mr. President, magdungoloyang, ognitia, budget tra fifteen million, because there's no guarantee. Wa, ay bekal budget, tra walela bekal ra, adiya kal guarantee, sense so is baudodh. Mang project, tringia ul, ngarnisela, la, bo, gera Minister of Finance, waseng gire certify a funds, mangomesesisbalela awdodh, omu uri ngir abelsinsa. Alsum, omeseng, last la mo trival dame, eng la mo girel, meriak dalawais, magomora title forty, ra section four hundred, to mes, last la mo girel, mangasadra roguil, malubem chensrala, malubem ontila President, tamir, asya ku spea supplemental, lammo bela reg program, malubem, magomora redaction in workforce, ra section eight point four, ra civil service regulations. Ay ga, Mr. President, ta mekanisa, ngarya el alta. Tiyang adiya kal starig, tiya diya kal absolute, tiyang adain amig, flexible system. El alta, mtiya dorur ngi, ignore roguh facts, sem la ra alone, diya say, everything's alright, ndakal, wa iseng. Ya, ngatel, ngateng, tiyanga, wanda, adal ul, omeseng, session, akwaseng, gida giredlan othir, se gida, di gida, malas prononse rigid. Le ay gil, lorgundiru minister, asen, ndakal, ganyagel, kondisyon sa W B, yet, a ADB, on the other hand, am la mo required, do shiship requirement tra W B, our bank. Ay gidi, conditional loan, eh, Mr. President, ta limit, options, se gidi, dimo tuntri, esay gidi, ngua blad give up, sovereign tier, gidi, dagdum la multirak, tru, asim, sok klu, mora hoop, and then, we have to ask, say, how high? Esay gida, adu begikri, Mr. President, mo, dagdukpagan, magudh di lo otro roguil, dimla dudla, kutring, dagdukdek, mag, dagdudla, keta, tuduk, kisi, eh, lagad la multirak, la riar.
Ya, chairman, gulgoringi, ay ul, mang, elangning.
Senat, ta le dora point of order, doreng, sagal mo dudu, eh, adadadu.
Eh, Senator Kyota, ma Senator Skubong, halal, agamongro, eh, da, di skasra budget, eh? Ndakang, aura gu gil, el ang egom guk, wasen, ndakang, sel forty million, adiya, adiya da garant tringi, magom, katra budget, el trail, ay just tringi. Len, len, ndakang, momdas ra forty million, ndi, el ang akuk projection, abes ra forty million, ya F A A, amlel, waseng ngarya forty million alsel. El asay giddil, projection, akuk, omeseng ngi, ndakang, 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 ganyar ngi, projection, kahal gu gil, el asel, overall katra state, ma national, telal million om, trail seybringi.
La, du la, President.
Adam, kamongir.
So gini, sel forty million, eh, Mr. President, se adondo du, Minister, albuls, adam, eng ul orta, ay gil criteria, malubengel, waseng requirements, lubengel, eh, conditions.
Adi, ak questiono, say, sel mkatra, a state a fifteen percent, mkatra national a fifteen percent, ngara ay gil bebil five, telat total, se giddil, el kat, el trail, waseng the seybrings, telal million, se giddil, total, overall cat.
Okay, ngara eight million, eh, Mr. President, ay gil cuts, hoy, ay gil cuts, okay, el asay gidi, SS, ma P U C, ma pension.
El asay giddil, eight million, trail, el mur, alsel, tiya giddil, overall, el cat, se giddil, ngara eight million, esel, mobile, mo dudh, al mora.
A civil service, SS, ma P U C.
Telal projection, ngara alsel, sel forty million loan.
Mer alsel.
May say?
May say.
Ndakang, di, akti question, bol klir, eh, len, ngora kan fusin, mang, len, F A A, amla mail, giredlan lurior, ra, se giddil, ngara F A A, il include ra forty, di, el agida, kuk, ngarya waseng, diya da siur ngi, ndi, yet, kame, ndiwa ay gil, molkut chairman, gida, dirgaha F A L mail, el garantir, sel full amount, dong, di soha, bol klil, se ya. Alsum, ngarya, dirgusol, mo mododu, rawira, smritiang, eh, bodh, senkyo?
Alit.
Senator, halil, po Senator Skubong, eh, Mario.
President, kamal, masal, ma reklad, eh? Ul magi kora, omeseng, kalil, ndakudheng, ndi, kalil unil, di dora, di, since, gadung ngara kontinuing resolution, di dungul six month, al sugum, dagdum wa isay giddil, let tiya, omeseng ngi, to be honest, tiya, omeseng ngi, adralil, wa isay gida, dagdung it, temorizik tringi, ra house, maldiwa, ay sir, kamiw. Yanga, adiya kal swak, eh, President, marura, real, wa isay.
Hal, hal, eh, Senator Skubong, mail, lak, momdas ra house, mederla, urelid, masel lotobda urelid, al mo, eguk, malsum, ngarya olduswir, ebol, after ra urelid, elak, domdas ra house, edorura urelid.
Mwa isay, mo isay?
Di, akti olngit, malak, domdas ra house, edorura urelid, medorura urelid, el base ra ay gil kuk fact, ma, a record, ma, ay gil assessment tra senate, drela urelid, eh? El borra house, ing, kuk, ngarya olduswir, matemoloyang, and then, after that, eh, alsum, ngarya, a difference, eh, and then, we come in, eh, tongabori.
Kamabora, bo, ba isay.
Senator Cuarte.
Sula, President, ta tiya ali, malungil, tasil, sel korak, marul, senators, eh, akti, sohal, dimo mut, dimo clarify, sel, sel tokol, bulgoringi, sel, lotobengi, kawasi, sel forty million, amra alsel, tiya budget, ay gil requirement tringi, eh, sel first el twenty, ya bladongu, eh, ten million, am apply, esel, second, el, el budget, di introduce ay gila, which I, I think, and say, edheng moruli, mal likelihood, ringi, dongo, aklo. Ay gidi, sel total, eh, F A L, biscida, Minister of Finance, ay gidi, ngil, meruli, tiya giddil, fifteen percent el adjustment, bol sabed, al agamodey, tra S S, ma pension, ma P P U C, mandimla, dorur ngi, milkat, tiya merio, krediri, lim, bol sed, al agamodey, ta ay gidi, bebil, ah, services, el mora, adra belu, bela, merkun. Sula.
Tiang, malungil, eh, Senator Cuarte, la, baybay, say, gidi, questiono, eh, gida, clarifier ngi, explainer ngil, mara, adam, understand, eh, la, la, gidi, blam dunga, adiya kal, explain to us, madang adal, madangli waseng, it's a fact, al wa isay, mregasulem. Al sugum, ndigang, eh, bodh, senkyo? Ndigang, eh, Senator Chin? Okay, ah, klir gam, wara ulgon.
Senator Betis, ah, kita, eh? Senator Kamsek, Elias Chin?
Oi.
Senator Kubai, Gikwa, Inabo?
Oi.
Senator Stevenson, Che, Cuarte?
Oi.
Senator Frank Kyota?
No.
Senator Eric M. Nakamura?
No.
Senator Philip Paul Clay?
No.
Senator Che, Udu, Samau Senior?
Yes.
Senator Chan, Biskubong?
No.
Senator Meison, ngir, Abang, Wips?
Yes.
Flo lider, Gray, Mario?
Oi.
Vice President Mark Eblar Rudim?
Oi.
President, Hojones, Paulis? President, Hojones, Paulis? President, ta senkyo, ah, nine years, ma four, no?
Nine years, four, no, mortal, yosa, ngara belur belaw, ra twenty twenty-one, short recess. Utel, dagdum, assesion, rigid, el mora order, flo leader.
President, dagdum la, bill calendar, namo America, urelid, say, madam, anan mora, resolution calendar, ndakang, ngara resolution calendar, trige al diya, ngara, iron thirteen, introduction of bills, introduction of resolutions, iron fifteen, eh, communications, mndrika diya, Mr. Lenius Business, mndrika diya, to para, iron sixteen, namislenius business, eh, President.
Visel, Visel Enius Business. Maria. Senator Cuarte.
Sula, tiya, President, akti, korabing, abert, tiang, eh, ngundas, we, mengaffect ra tokol, adra belaw, lo, umral, ah, last week, el meri la, betol, karam, la mo diya ra, ay gara roguil, pharmacy ra belur belaw, mar adra bela, rela, eh, diya kal, nyora order, nyora shipment, magundas, ay gil, eh, shipment, tra, taxalmanalia, korak, groceries in the pharmaceuticals, ndadi hospital, ay gara roguil, diya dil imolgar, betol, madang la kar, espesil grula, high blood, masukan, makti, du li, say, President, le bebil a time, eh, dagdum, damasad, le ngala, ay gil, day to day, el affect ra ngara, adra belaw, makti, mention, eh, sembo, dengar, adra belaw, wasay, la giregal, kukti, giregal mo, mesela minister personally, eh, omesel, wasay, gimgarang, execute, ay gidi, gal, eh, make sure a shipment, a regular, elis, tel, more hospital, sula.
Sula, eh, Senator Cuarte, ramalungil, ganser, reklod, tutlil. Dang, Mr. Lenius Business? Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, talib, al betoga, Mr. Lenius, eh, nga, ah, agute, Mr. President, eh, ngari ngi, seli, eh, el ngar hospital, el, el, betol, adha, agora, name, olngit, wasay, em, si ga aldu ulele, bol lurior. El betol adha, agora nami olingi talwa sen si ga aldu ullele bol oureora city scan. Ngani espesely imoruba kal, ngariya tarangil, el kuras meri mal giridil lulya city scan era talul, and itel city scan ada haloureor, mang malguru siyang kal smera. Mang malolingi talwa sen si ga aldu ullele bol unila city scan. Ma, Mr. President, da kuda di laseng ngarul mandakasel mongila, badengi laseng namabetokal kora da bring up ringi da before. Ma malolingi talwa sen bo da si ga aldu ullele bol se aloureora sel city scan. Ah, ongerunge, Mr. President, ndissohal bring up er sel miscam ten das ninety nine sixty five. Tianga ablendrengi BSIC il may. Lolingi talwa sen al bol, bol sapel al may BSIC, el bol dabastiratela, bol explainer sel project. Total cost tringi twenty nine million. Ita malatkal wa sen, dirgal lobongi el tel babiera ngaringi sel timeline. Ita malatkal wa sen bol sapel, el start el start el aurere la procurement el gaybolar el September, next month. E ya abe biray kal loan, el tiramalatkal momlaya ospe a sovereign guarantee. Mang akora di, i bring that up eh, Mr. President, kada dulu ndasal wa sen bol meriga budget, kura mu taboto tongalia financial conditioner ablur belaw. Ma, akulite, Mr. President, eh, senatorsan bol sapil mesa se gi deng babirngi la BSIC, e bo da, e bol sebedel lulya public hearing lobontrir, mal bol president el project, etir omdasal motmokaring, ding at least two million agiril tob del mortal project. Ongerunge, Mr. President, ongedel isele minister nga, asel miscam ten das nine sixty two. Tiaba birngela, asi ora PUC il mergawe, Mr. President. Ngowaisel wa sen el al august, etir alamo la conclude ra asel negotiation ser tir, al giril sel solar project, etir amalatkar ngi. Ma tel babira oaisel wa sen kalte el konvali ablal, el tir amalatkal wa sen bol sapel awor de tel bi del mortir. Masel number one el konvali, solar Pacific Philippines. Ita wa sen tegi da prefer dal top rank respondent, respondent. Ya ongerungel konvali, Medka, tekonvali ra Cyprus. Ya ongedel konvali, NGIPS, tekonvali ra Italy. Eh, Mr. President, ta, ta, ta diakal oaisel wa sen telanga offerer tel konvali. Ndii takmul wa sen tamalfokusel low cost utility scale solar PV. E wa sen alo mesra upgrades, la la lu ra ayers twenty fourteen and more twenty nineteen, engara twenty one cents per kilowatt hour. Andi tiramle, eh, request ra and real, el provide ra a cost del mortir. El lospe er sel dadulwa sen cost of renewable energies spread seat tool system, ma IWE na report ra solar PV. It wa sen arala, a solar agiril ngara a sixteen cents, sixteen point thirty five cents per kilowatt hour. Ma tiaba birngela dikmulwa sen kal gotel, kal number one el offerer tir interest tringi, propose ra tariff, el ngaryawa aral ra ayga egi dengura blalomas, wa sen tar maqalol mil cents. Mr. President, tel babiera oais, wa sen ngaringi ya amo talntangil tel agreement, el dolgyaringi wa sen government support agreement. Tel government support agreement ta oaisel wa sen mo diakal, kada mo protect ra konvali ra PUC, ndiakal se edel chinsal la. Ndiaakal se edel lulya la al mo ora atoma li tel konvali, mal ube kada lulyi mo mo diakal oureor tegi deng agreement ra drongali tihal PUC ma mang, kunda se, Mr. President, se klo tutlil al desang. Mang I guess eh, bol sebedel tegatime, dirgal tralia hearing lobongi PUC, il girategi deng solar project. Alsumu mang gora malurudel, ayga gi da tablong al waya urudel project ra PUC, ma project ra submarine cable corporation. Ma ak ti oais, eh, etsumu ma senetangonge yakmo schedulea hearing lobongi la ikal el konvali ra, ekal tablong konvali kit. Ma se gi da, ayga gi da isele minister nga, Mr. President, kama malmasaula.
Ya malmasaula chairman Inabo, akumral wa sen rogu il ngartangamnarmeng sa egiel adada la chairman Inabo, ma ontil, ma ti, eh, taramal giridil mogorgikirngi, el al longtrui lolbi ra glulaw. Betoga decision, el giridil mal bo unil lo mes se edisaid, len mo efekt ra maral mail government, ma maral mail generation adarablu belaw. Gi da alban ra tegora solar, tegora den gi, el tegora den gi obengidil forever. Ma tegora kan pact, ayga gi da tul mal major decision, el giril el al time, el al government tamet, for the next generation. Mang, ayga gi da, alda da la chairman Inabo blaldung, mang nguidakan sensus ra adaro gu, kada dolngi tringi bol mega arrangement, el giril ayga tabrol konvali, ebo dmitertir, ayga gi deng blaldung amo subject. O si si urtime, kada dolngi tra chairman JGA, senator Mariur, ma mrelia oversight lobongi la vice president, eh, minister of justice, el giril akan pact, tel negotiation. Eh, ndiaga, ndiaga, sebedel mu du ramrigel, len ngaringi omtergi, gukti mrelia o, akan pact review lobongi la minister. El olbi ra glulaw, akan daktrngi. Ma diregal mrelia, pomka dengi kau ma chairman PUC, em adadu, radai, tamatai, em oturkukla ayga gi deng temel, bol sebedel mit ra, eh, minister of justice, ngi omra ra kan pact review, ediregal ma senator Inabo, ayga gi deng meeting, ayga egiel maral maklo tutlil tegoi, len inbol ba ontil awdoud, inbol ba loan, ngi gi deng masaudra additional loan, angara odel million, on tapra ikal bebil gi da alban le, e masaudra el al time. Senator Mariur.
Sula, president akuna, akumergi dengal assignment terkau, ma akmo diregal mo rol lobongi la senator Inabo, gi mo arenso, akaseng mo ingaral date, mo sebedel kan dakta ikal, oversta ikal, meeting lobontra ikal, vice president, etirgal guk ezensisal ment. Ak ti sohalwa digori tangi senator Inabo, ma gi deng senators. Le gi deng ngaringi sel resolution, blel, blel, dedikil ngirngi wa da adultrusel klisi ed ra tel sobrel, garantil wa blel adoraisa president, el mo onger se gi deng lobongi la Australia. El se gi deng lo du, gi de to aset tiangamal di mosabela tegi deng BSIC ma Australia, al mosabir, maygi gi deng udawudel may lo tobedi, se gi deng ra, le tel modision na mo ganik tuwurngi merbelam, oriuul taen. Mang se gi deng kwa di sohal, mang aset tiang oriuul taen, ngi deng tel ma alban ngi ma masaudra ngi, lubeng oriuul dikmedang. Se gi deng kora sohal, mang dengali elektrika kora men muski da, taladu, ewu, esnekletuukmila bat, taladu, mang mal kwa di sohal, mang dengi ayga gi deng, ngaka, ngaka mle, akmle nor sel resolution. Len dimla kumral wa sen, gukne kuda olusel, ndina kumral wa sen, elat tel time tel paper article dobang, se ya enough el al time. El sumu to aset tiang asapel ngua, BSIC sapel ngue, diakal, bol diakal, alsumu ngariya telela arala ayga gi deng usapela internet del merio. Andi se gi deng mo diakal bol, gatmakli, mosabel diyo siswa arala internet, ayga gi deng sebedel affordel ngu, se gi deng ngerul cable. Maygi gi deng ayga kora mle isuranga, alwa sen, alsumu se gi deng tel al ra arala ikal services, el adar belaw, agiril merio, e bo gi deng astobri gi se gi de, mutru nga, imo seka mle kanduranga, inui, kora di mle ikal, se gi deng mle uldasasi. Te di ngu, se gi deng loan, maygiel grant ra Australia. E may ngu, se gi deng lo tobedi, se ra al. Mang mosabel oriuul taen, kada mo di saidel meng. Ndii se gi deng kora di, ere ngungil, chairman bol sebedel, chair bol sebedel, ngoytutril mebo do kada ngi se gi deng uldasu len. Tegora mle kuda, sohal, ela kuda guk kora ma reedrengi, kada kora ngara lobongorte al government, te diregal kora mal, mriidra, ayga gi deng betokal uldasu, wasi, ayga ngu gi deng mo giril ger. Sula, president.
Senator Senior.
Ma masara, talen, Mr. President. Mr. President, ngutuy ra ikal, mal digam nomre kal tiem, wa sen giridil mongil, al marrital ra ikal, alban len, ayga mo afect ra, ayga talorolun maralme. Ya sohal di, OT sel wayal, kora mal disappointment ra nga, ra mla ya ku er gi deng giril tel kan pact. Mr. President, twenty five years later, ki da sa ngira kan pact ra nineteen ninety four? Twenty five years later, ndiakau du, ndiakau du. Mang tirgeng mle ngar alir el manet, ayga le, lel dartheng, ewal darthel million, el dangila yang, tengar ge, el ngi cheroba lanser gi. Cheroba lanser. Mang kasiba ngukal len, gi deng, el ngara ayga gi deng droalabway. Ay giridil mo gorgikal, el ngatmokar adarablu, and that includes being responsible with public funds, being responsible for public funds. Mang mal maki tarunguk, sel twenty five years later, eh, ogure el lahau du deh, sel edel sobaklia, belaw el al time, blal crossa, egana mirgi deng tel covid nineteen. Ma se ya, gotel, gotel isele newsan nga, wa sen, aldumang ak akdirul wa sen akhapira, positional blakngul giril tegi deng budget, taldirgble de pasal. Len giridil momngaromel, olgesa, ausagre damma. Arite, giridil mo as a people, mo realize wa sen gi da, ngara alabul, mang giridil mo blakangu, el mangrem, mal sebedel survivor tegi deng el covid pandemic, ularing sa minister finance, rasyon di lo wa sen, mo e imarageng ya mosabel al almutel mo mesanga. Ay egana mirgi deng akora, tel give al rebound. Ongerul isele newsan nga, Mr. President, kora di kama do girala kan pactet tianga, nariya adal nga, angayorol omgodong alme len, malbata ngarso da, se algomoni asiwandori, skogilmo, ma, te diregal mal concern, wa sen tirang, ta testa, te diakal testa. Eh, mang manimki tarungu, lo ayser tire, Mr. President, wa sen, ki da adar bela, tiaga, el se edel masawder tire la. Seradu wa kan pact. Ya di gi ngi, ekmulwa sen, amri gel. Enga kanga ra section three twelve ra, tel kan pact of reassociation agreement. A government ra amri gel, angariya mo il klisi ed, mangar alil girila security, ma defense, matters, sel girila belaw. Ndii tiramarkong asabiir, el kan dakta exercise, eh, ra military exercise, rebebula utum, ma vav, ma airspace, ayang adar belaw. Ya iganga, angariya klisi iral mangatmok. Yang government ra amri gel, ah, diregal sebiir, etira invite tringi deng armed forces ra bebi ra belaw, alme ospe a military area ma facility ser belaw, etira, ah, ah, orior lobongi la United States Armed Forces. Ki da kmal, tiaga klisi ed, kora masawda, ikal klo, keda ma atume, sel maya military na amri gel, mar mal mail wa sen, aygi ma ospe angarang, el girila defense ma security. Se ya di gi ngaringi ra, lo me e imaragra se seradengera kan pact. Sel mal maki tarungu ngai, ding guk mle decision, etirgengi loa kan pact. Section three fourteen. Tiya, Mr. President, kora, di gi deng, ke gi dengamnarmeng si isela tiaro, temporary restraining order. Tiya il languichel ngartang, a permanent restraining order, gi deng adar belaw. Wa sen government belaw, a refrain, wa do rega daru de, diakal se edel magamnitan ting. Ado, ang diakal sebedel, el rulya ngidil ngarang, giridil di mo refrain, el diakal dorula ngidil ngarang. El government ra amri gel, after ablal adadu, ngi ma government belaw. El momrula ngidil lu, el action, el motomali, mal ubeng mo diakal redamalen, sel klisi ed amri gel, ra security ma defense, ablu belaw. Mesela lo gol kan plainar adra ngayaw, ya kwa se adil, mo usubese tiya gi dengi ekmutil, aktilga sel may, te dioba sel soririgid. Tiya gi deng bay mail, blakatakretak, bundiakal sebedel magarang. Maldu ma kmal orangasuleme, Mr. President, len, bol se ela vice president al may, mo du, bo du ngil khaavengi, edo ay sir adarablu, kwalkloadal wa sen, ki da diaka kontroller gi deng tel balwat sel may, tel military. Sel maya adra amri gel, la, aygiel soril labor ngi, en diakal se edel kmulmong rang. Let se ya di gi ngaringi ra, seradudu oi, ra kan pact of reassociation. Maldu ma kasa ngar gayka ludaw, ngar gayka ludaw, dangila miski deng ra ualele, edimla kada, dongatmok, seibra immolcensum, el al sebedel oi begi tiya covid nineteen. Kayamare, Mr. President, akmal kora mo emotional, ndii mal maki tarungu ngargid, kita arungu ngargid ra, aygiel ludaw del dangila, eh, diaka, diaka immolcensar ngi el alchins, mesela kaklar gi. Sel molastal isele newsan nga, Mr. President, alay borda September seven, el al mail kotolurior, mang halide. Mang malsohalo giu tegi deng talen, orangasuli ra rogu il adar belaw, etira angara aurior el melisi etir al el balwat. Ma kara karingela blu belaw, angara private sector, mangara government. Mutirgeng, tokuni, tirgeng frontliners, tirgeng tokta, amal noors, ma tirgeng tirangara, amadaltel government agiril, lolngaseor agiril, tel tegora covid nineteen. Ak ti diregal malsohalo, morreko tnasir, tirgeng ngara road and ground, len sel domgal alme, maral unil, arungu du, mesterir, lourior, e maral wal klige, tel pularael, ma diakal
Ela sel bo mungil ome serini, sel popere indiak sal malmo watitwol masawda egel amon. Di sel oversell fifteen percent el didakson e president. Eng proposal mo didakta ninety-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-five, er sel general staff account. Mong a eli gada mlo ga idak ma sen dhaqadolu ga ndeaga adal mo mregal urior. Ma deaga ar tial fifteen percent el didakson ra government. Di tia gidal el alseel sil domis serini, emla moriña proposal ra senate, el momulub tra ninety-nine thousand ra general staff. Se mo affect ra employees, er tial urior a sel telblay. Misela dhaqma se tangan ra eight il motir e employees, a average sil mo mregal urior, rasum gada qatringi. Mong di swagabol, lo dengay, bol lo dengay trigel lulmondangaga elik mong deaga mo qatra ra employees ra government. Tial domis serini el al ngar madat, tia ya mo kme del ospe erini ay garo gul agencies ra government ma ministries. Rasum ta mo qata fifteen percent ra egel rogul sektion agon ter tir, etegi diya bol taita etegi del tretaila bol ospe eri. Ak di hop e president ra se deaga adal mo mregal urior, kada mo se be del mululu urgawe, er reshuffle. Kada rearrange, ma gada mo budget tabebir laudow dra general account, mo ra general staff. Mong mo deaga adal urior, di sugum gada proposal tial budget ral al time ss, etangan rial adal ngara senate, temu deaga bol urior ra officially twenty-twenty-one. Tia amle digiril di lastel di imol, misel misalang e president, ndi senate senior amlo mention a compact savings rigid ma fund agid. Mong masigada ngara zero balance el al time. Mong gora mora ngurwa se egal financial statement, ortobda finance, ay galil bay la blulakku. Re el al time e just lastir, esegid ra dungusel udo dra compact one, gada ngilo sixty million uru leyer ra atiachil compact fund rigid. Eshe being invested, esegid el dollar fifteen million urinira bekara. Alak alwiding through covid market, emle daon, ngarara two-hundred-eight million amde erelang. Mong president, ngire del mobla taq ma gada blu ra se oy ngarya savings rigid, el clela compact fund savings. El ngialo ngura ngiam, ay gal money market, invested for us. Drigal ngarya udu de de segid ra sing, tial toga ra conservation el ngara bol abey, drigal ngarya savings rigid ngar sey. Drigal ngarya savings rigid social security, drigal ngarya savings rigid ra pension plan, ma drigal development bank. Ngarya president, misel di, the plane di ra sing, el al time, il temela covid, taabsul ablu bela, gada ngara zero balance. Eng mal disrespect el mo ra blu amregel e president. Ak pal ngol gune, respect, admire, eh, di regal amata ablu amregel, ra gal kaltaqtel araga lobengedel merelang. Kada gora mo or urundin aswar tarole, tangan ngiam le benefiteri, mal ungil asward reelang. Oh, ma petogal blar rule, ablu ra amregel mergid, kada tedir mo, li gada mo amat el talseel se obes. Mong ngire del malmo, blagataq il mor ader bela wa se, ay gagida blar rule, ay gagida udu de de madegla. Esedra se zero balance, eng meringil timura di ngakal togoi, rendega la maral togoi. Ngarya udu de del biscida adra ngarbar, ma gada mna invest, ngarya millions and millions ngara investment de merelang. El lo ul sel udo da ngire del ospe erinil perpetual, ngirel mo deaga mo kme. Ma gidal el al time, o ni trabla amregel, asegada magarang el mut, esmiga de aler sel udo. Masel da ngal ol ora ay gagid el money market investment, eng mo se be del ospe erini, deaga del udu ospe angis ra amregel, in terms of yearly financing. Mong kada akbal admire agel blal du senate senior, ndi mal di tal segi diya wa amlo deaga blagataqro de sebe. Di swagabol blagataqro, ngarya udu de del biscida adra ngarbar, ngara bankreelang, kme de ngarara two-hundred-eight million a il di se reelang.